Mr. President, we do have two speakers that are noted in support of the Chicago Education Partnership. Would you like to hear from them now?
Uh huh.
Thank you, Mr. President. That would be Speaker number 53, Tasha Sykes, followed by Speaker number 54, Michael Ross, please.
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Tasha Sykes, and I live in the Austin community, in the same house in which I grew up in. As a child growing up, I knew that I deserved better, and I made a vow that when I had children, no matter the cost, they would attend private schools in the suburbs. I kept that vow, and my children attend Catholic schools for quality education, moral and character development, smaller class sizes, and teachers who care about the success of their children, as well as a safe learning environment, all of which I could not find in my own community's local public schools. But today, I stand before you with a solution, the one that is being proposed by the Chicago Education Partnership in Austin. Some of the attributes of the school being proposed are a rigorous academic environment that will help to propel our children forward, coupled with the use of technology and small group instruction that will meet each child at their own level of learning. This school will also have a strong character-based curriculum, the very things in which I teach my own children at home. And finally, the school will have a partnership with By the Hand Club for Kids, an after-school program that I am very familiar with and one that is second to none. By the Hand Club cares deeply about our children, making sure that they are safe, nurtured, while equipping them for success. You can look at the data and history, and it's easy to write the Austin community off, but I speak not to your titles, but from one parent to another. We make decisions every day that we believe are in the best interest of our own children. While the children of Austin deserve that same treatment, make the decision to be in favor of the Chicago Education Partnership school being proposed for the Austin community. This decision is not a short-term decision, but one that will affect future generations to come. The education quality should not be sacrificed in Austin because it's predominantly an African-American community.
Ms. Sykes, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Sure.
Thank you.
Give our young people the chance they deserve by letting the Chicago Education Partnership move forward. This school is necessary. It has been since I was growing up as a child my own self. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sykes.
Our next speaker, please, Michael Ross.
President Vitale, CEO Bennett, and all of your distinguished cabinet. I am the Michael J. Ross, the pastor of New Galilee Missionary Baptist Church. I've been the pastor of New Galilee for 12 years, so I have seen up close and personal what By the Hand Club has done for the children in that community, you know, taking failing students and really moving them to up to B-level and A-level work. And so, I ask this committee to consider the Chicago Education Partnership and all that it brings to that community. When you look at the massive structure that has been built by By the Hand Club, and you see from our children, I have members of my church have grandchildren that attend By the Hand Club, and I could tell you the results are phenomenal, outstanding, and so I ask this committee to consider approving the charter school, Chicago Education Partnership, for all the right reasons. There's only two charter schools in that community, serving about 680 students, and both of them have a long waiting list. So we ask you to consider CEP, because I think CEP is the next generation of education that really and completely help our children succeed. So not only academically, but socially. And so, we ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Ross.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speaker then will be Speaker number four, please, Anna Espinoza, followed by Speaker number nine, Maria Letizia Toribio.
I want to thank you for giving us your time. My name is Anna Espinoza. I am a parent of a kindergartner at McAuliffe and an aunt to a seventh grader at Ames. We are here to open up a discussion of better options for Ames. Parents and students have voted. Ninety percent of parents and students do not want a military school. There are other better options for the Marine School. There's Espera Charter at 1711 North California. There's also Von Humboldt. There's Clemente High School. There are better options for Ames that would reflect the wants and the needs of parents and students. We have spent a whole year looking at different options to fill Ames, for example, I mean, for the success of Ames. For example, expand the middle school to sixth to seventh grade to take students from nearby overcrowded elementary schools. Create a small community high school, like Community Leans founded by Dr. Carlos, and address the early childhood needs in the neighborhood. We need to look at how change will affect the school and the neighborhood around us. From Frieder Schools to Calvin Park Schools, we have great ideas too, as parents and students. These are just possibilities right now. We need CPS to help us and to further discuss this issue. Do you know that while we are talking, Marine teachers are in our schools, and Todd Connor is sending letters to Ames and other Frieder Schools saying that Marine, the Marine School is already a done deal for Ames?
Ms. Espinoza, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Yes, I sure will.
Thank you.
Here is a letter that compares the Marine Schools, Lane, and Whitney Young. That is outrageous, the percentages here. Mr. Connor is providing very misleading information. By most standards, Marine is a failing school and a dropout factory. I feel you are disrespecting us, the parents implying we are ignorant parents, we're not aware of what's happening with our school. We are. Show us the respect of a real community process and promote, and stop promoting lies to our community.
Thank you, Ms. Espinoza. Our next speaker, please.
Buenos dias, mi nombre es Maria Letizia Toribio. Soy madre de una niña de la escuela Ames que está en octavo año y soy miembro del Consilio de la Escuela Nixon.
My name is Maria Letizia Toribio. I'm a mother of an eighth grader and a member of the Nixon Council.
El 12 de noviembre, el día de reporte de calificaciones, padres y alumnos de la Escuela Ames votaron por el futuro de Ames.
In November 12th, Report Card Day, students and parents of Ames had a vote about the future of the school.
Bajo las siguientes preguntas, seleccionando una opción, y las siguientes preguntas son: Una escuela comunitaria intermedia que recibe a todos los estudiantes del vecindario. Segunda, una escuela militar selectiva que no admitiría a todos los estudiantes del vecindario.
They had two questions to select. One, a community school receiving students from all over the neighborhood, or a selected academy, military academy that not, with no admission from students from the neighborhood.
Y los resultados fueron los siguientes: 768 votos de que la escuela Ames se mantenga como una escuela comunitaria.
We had 768 votes in favor that Ames continues being a community school.
Y solamente 40 votos a favor de una escuela militar selectiva.
And only 40 votes in favor of a military academy.
También colectamos 2,481 firmas en la petición donde la comunidad se opone para convertir la escuela Ames intermedia en una escuela militar.
We also collected 2,481 signatures in a petition opposing the conversion of the school into a military academy.
I quiero entregarle las pruebas de que la comunidad entera se opone a la implementación de una escuela secundaria selectiva militar.
I have here also the proof of the community opposing the military academy. I want to deliver you the signatures.
Mi pregunta a ustedes es, ¿qué más pruebas quieren para probar que la comunidad rechaza la idea de una escuela militar en nuestra comunidad?
My question is, what kind of proof you need now to admit that the community is against the military academy?
Mr. Rubio, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Okay. La confusión continúa en las escuelas Ames, Nixon, y McAuliffe.
There is confusion among the schools, Ames, Nixon, and McAuliffe.
Porque la semana pasada que nos reunimos con usted, señor Vitale y señora Barbara, nos dijeron que la decisión sería tomada escuchando a la comunidad.
Past week, we met with you, Mr. Vitale, CEO Barbara Bennett, and we were told that the decision is going to be taken, listening to the whole community.
Pero el viernes de la misma semana, mi sorpresa fue que recibí una carta de mi hija de la escuela Nixon donde ustedes dan por hecho una escuela militar en Ames.
But on Friday, I was surprised you received a letter from the school saying that the Ames going to military academy is a done deal.
Mr. Rubio, thank you.
Sí.
Mr. Rubio.
Solo quiero preguntar una cosa. ¿Alguien me podría contestar qué es lo que está pasando o por qué nos están engañando así?
So my question is simple. What's going on? Can you explain to me what's going on, what is going to be the decision?
So, thank you for coming down today. As Dr. Bert Bennett and I told you when we met with you last week, we're willing to work with the community for what is the best interest of the children, and we will continue to try to work with you to come up with a solution that's good for all of the kids in the neighborhood. So, please, continue to work with us, but we'll be back to you. Thank you.
Puedo preguntar cuándo podemos tener esta nueva reunión?
Can I ask when is going to be the next meeting?
No, I'm sorry. Henry.
Well, this can't be a done deal because the, whatever was said, the board has not voted, so nothing is a done deal on this matter. Point one. I have a question for our CEO, actually, two questions, factual questions. What's the current enrollment utilization of Ames?
I'm sorry, I don't have that at my fingertips. Todd, do you have that information at this moment, Ames utilization?
So, can you get that for the board, Todd? And the second one, because we've had, I see the pile of paper, I've met with this group during my office. Has, have we have some, I'm not casting any dispersions, I'm only asking a question, some authentication of the vote. There's a lot of people that voted, over 800 or so between students and others. So, is this, do we know what this, what this community feels?
To respond to that, I have not seen the petitions nor received the petitions that this group has presented. I've only received petitions that have been presented by, I'm the alderman from the community, and that has gone to our intergovernmental office.
Well, I think when the board hears about a vote like this, it would be nice for us to know. Again, I'm not doubting it, I just, we need some independent verification of, we've heard from Alderman Maldonado in the past, of what community of parents, students, think.
We'll work with Todd and with the legal department to figure out the way in which to authenticate those signatures.
Just to clarify, I don't believe this requires a board vote. Since it's just a change of academic.
Change of academic.
You will? Okay.
So, you'll hear more from us. Thank you for coming down.
With all respect, we would like if you review the 1,200 signatures and the votes and think in what the community is saying. Thank you so much to pay attention to us.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next group of individuals are here regarding the PE policy. Speaker number five, please, Guillermo Gomez, followed by Speaker number 11, Jose Hernandez.
Good morning. Mr. Vitale, Ms. Barbara Bert Bennett, and all board members. Well, we are here, first of all, my name is Guillermo Gomez. I'm the vice president of Healthy Schools Campaign, and we are here to submit 7,000 petitions from across the city that were collected by parents that serve in the local school councils, are also members of the wellness teams. We represent at least 12 communities in the city of Chicago, and we are here in favor of daily PE. We are a bit disappointed that the policy was pulled out of the agenda. We have been working very hard. We were able to generate a lot of support, as manifested here by the petitions that we have, and we, you know, we really want to see their policy presented and passed. It's a good policy. As you know, currently, Chicago students receive one period of physical education per week at the elementary school level, and the majority receives two semesters of physical education at the high school level. For a variety of reasons, including lack of facilities, budget constraints, and the prioritization of standardized tests, PE has steadily disappeared from the school day, so we want it back. Today, we urge the Board of Education to strengthen CPS's commitment to PE, support the mission to increase the quantity and quality of physical education for all students of CPS by adopting a policy that includes rescinding the current policy that authorizes the school board to excuse students enrolled in grades 11 and 12 from engaging in daily physical education, to clearly establish the goal of providing all students with access to high-quality daily PE, and by adopting a physical education strategic plan for meeting this goal that provides a roadmap for meeting this goal. In conclusion, we are excited by the Chicago Public Schools Plan, Five-Year Plan of Action, the next generation Chicago's children, which has set for itself the goal of providing high-quality physical education instruction every day and requiring daily physical education for all four years.
Mr. Gomez, excuse me, can you please conclude?
Sure, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we need a policy, and we would like for you to consider it as soon as possible. And at this time, we also ask Ms. Barbara Bert Bennett for a meeting sometime before the next board meeting, so we can at least, you know, hear you out, and you can hear our concerns, and we're a group that has been around for over 10 years, working very diligently in creating healthy school environments. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just, I would remind you, I think it was two years ago, this board actually supported a waiver with a commitment not to ask for another waiver.
That's right.
And I know the management, so we support improved physical education for all of our students, and I know that the management has been working extraordinarily hard to bring a policy forward that meets that objective, and we look forward to supporting it when we get it. I know it's complicated, and so I know they're working hard to bring it forward, and I'm sure it's coming soon.
Thank you. You have 7,000 petitions here.
Yeah, and I will guarantee you that when it comes forward, what you've said today and all of your petitions will be in our minds as we vote on it.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Buenos dias, members of the board. President Vitale, CEO Barbara Bennett, and all members of the board. My name is Jose Hernandez. I'm also a member of the Parents United for Healthy Schools. We collected over 7,200 petitions, as you have seen. Now, who signed these petitions? These petitions were signed by parents. These petitions were signed by teachers. These petitions were signed by principals. These petitions also were signed by all of the members of the local school council advisory board, as well as the parent food advisory board, and a lot of the, a large number of local school council members. And that brings me also to the point of the second day for the elections, so I want to thank you for extending or giving an additional day. But also, you know, you have a lot of people, a lot of concern for our children. We need to continue the fight against obesity, and we feel that the physical education increasing the number of minutes in the week that where the students participate in physical education is really going to help a lot also, and then it's going to bring out the academic achievement as well. So, thank you.
Thank you for supportive. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. President, will be Speaker number 60, please, Diane Schmidt, regarding LaSalle. And then, we will have Mr. Jose Rivera, who is representing Alderman Burke from the 14th Ward, regarding the Edwards Elementary School, followed by the two speakers noted on the speakers list. Speaker number six, Silvia Miranda, and Speaker number 14, Liliana Hernandez, please.
Thank you. I was just dealing with a call from CPS Lincoln School, where my daughter is ill, and of course, got to coordinate all that, all these every day. My name is Diane Schmidt. I am the parent of a seventh grader at Lincoln Elementary School. I've served on the PTA at Lincoln for the past seven years as a volunteer, chair, and vice president, and I am a current volunteer member of CPS's Health Education Committee and former Nutrition Education Steering Committee. I believe in public education, excuse me, I'm a little out of breath from running, and have been an avid supporter of Lincoln Elementary School and CPS. I'm here because I would love some equal opportunity from the theatrics that presents itself in the pro-build movement at Lincoln Elementary School. I understand that they won their case, but we have not had any public or community involvement in this decision. And I would like to be able to be affirmed in some way, as a community member who's worked two years, to come before the board through our community to express about not being, not using the funds for Lincoln and using it for other schools that are needier than Lincoln. So, I understand that there's politics involved here, but I believe in education, I believe in Lincoln School, I believe in a playground, I believe in sustainability, which all impacts this decision to expand Lincoln Elementary School. I am really interested in the incongruities with the board and with CPS, in that you are the third-largest school system in the country, and you have a lot of muscle, yet I believe, in my opinion, you capitulated to a number of parents that were standing here without any due process of the voices that oppose this. We never organized as well as our, the people who are for the building, because we thought it was such a crazy idea, putting all this money into the most entitled school in the city, when all these other needy schools from these parents. And I want to ask, why are the parents at Lincoln that stood up and say, "I demand a school," why are their voices more audible than all these other parents who believe the same thing for their kids? I don't understand that.
Ms. Schmidt.
I am a huge, I am a huge supporter of CPS. I think you guys, I applaud you for taking this track.
Ms. Schmidt.
But I understand that you need to listen to all the other components of this and stand up for the people who work very hard to make education equitable for all. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Schmidt, while you're there, I would just point out that this process has been going on for years. There have been a significant number of public meetings that people have come to. If you didn't get organized, I'm sorry for that, but this has not been a conversation that's gone without public input for the last three or four years, because I've participated in it. And I would also remind you, we spent significant capital money last summer, over $150 million, if I remember correctly, in welcoming schools on the South and West Side. So, I think you ought to get your facts a little bit squared away. Thank you. Sorry.
Well, I'm sorry that you're.
Sorry, sorry. Thank you.
President Vitale, ladies and gentlemen, Alderman Burke was scheduled to be here, but we have a city council meeting, and so he is not able to be here. My name is Jose Rivera, and I am here on his behalf. We're here, first of all, to thank you for including Richard Edwards Elementary School, located at 4815 South Karlov, into the draft educational facilities master plan. Obviously, it sorely needs a lot of help with respect to the building facilities. We also, Alderman Burke would also like to thank you for helping accommodate some of the overcrowding at 5101 South Keeler, at the New Life Church. The concern is, is that it's an IB program. It feeds Kiri High School. The facility over at New Life Church with respect to the 165 kindergartens, well, that's maxed out, and the school, of course, is overcrowded. It's a familiar story that you are grappling with. But to expand access to quality IB programming at Richard Edwards School, we have to have a long-term plan. It is a critical piece in that IB picture on the southwest side with respect to Kiri High School, and at this very moment, it is completely maxed out, and if you go there, you know, we have concerns about the IB program. So, Alderman Burke wanted to bring that to your attention, and we look forward, we in the community, with working with you on that, on that issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you for the information for representing Alderman Burke here this morning.
Yes.
You can start.
I wasn't sure. Well, here I am again. We were here last week or two weeks ago talking about the overcrowding, and here we go again. I gave out some folders for everybody to have one. If you guys pull out the master plan that someone from CPS wrote it.
Please introduce yourself, okay?
Silvia Miranda from Richard Edwards Elementary School.
Thank you.
It's an IB, fine and performing arts magnet school. Thank you. If you guys look at the school name at Edwards, if you look at our capacity, it's over 1,500 students. Ideal capacity is 170. We're overcrowded at 173 percent. If you take a look at PEC, it's the number one in the McKinley area overcrowded with 201, following PESTURE, 187 percent. That's the second. They will get a school on 60th and Karlov to alleviate their overcrowded. That would put us, that would put us in first overcrowded in the McKinley area at 173 percent. If you take a look at the enrollment growth, we are at 6 percent. That means that for every 100 children, we're going to be having, 1,000, 100 children, we're going to be getting about 60 new students school year, where PESTURE is negative 16 percent, they're not growing, and PEC is at 0 percent, I'm sorry, they're not growing, and PESTURE is losing kids. That's just something for you to keep, to look at, but then, of course, somebody from CPS wrote it. Another thing, we are very thankful for the New Life. We have the six classrooms there. However, that's already overcrowded. We have 165 currently enrolled kindergarteners there. That's about 28 five-year-olds in a classroom together, full day. We do have one classroom with 31 students. That's already overcrowded. Did anybody stop and think, what's going to happen next year when those kindergarteners go to the main campus first grade? There's five classrooms first grade. Where are we going to put the remainder? There's 165 kindergarteners. That's 130 first graders right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
We need a plan for long term. We have the short-term New Life, thank you very much, but that's just a patch to the problem. I mentioned it before, we're so rich in students, we're so poor in resources. Where's our techs money? Where's the TIF? Where's the state? Where's all that money going to? We currently, as a short term, we mentioned before, we need a parents' room at the New Life. We need a classroom, because it's already overcrowded there. So, there's some more accommodations that need to be done. That's just a patch.
Thank you, Ms. Miranda. Our next speaker, please, Liliana Hernandez.
Mi nombre es Liliana Hernandez, presidenta del Consilio de la Escuela Elementarya Richard Edwards. Somos una escuela IB magneto de bellas artes, con clases de violín, banda, baile de salón. Tenemos un programa de lenguaje dual, con una población de 1,500 estudiantes, que ofrece clases desde preescolar hasta octavo grado.
My name is Liliana Hernandez, president of the LSC Council. In my school, Edwards Elementary, in the South Side, we are a school IB magnet, fine arts, right? Fine arts, with violin classes, band, drama, ballroom, and also a dual-language program and a population of 1,550 students with classes that go from preschool to eighth grade.
La razón de estar el día de hoy aquí es porque nos gustaría oír. Si nuestra escuela tiene problemas de sobrepoblación, no fue incluida en el plan. Ahora le acaban de entregar una hoja a mi compañera, que acaba de hablar, y en donde nos están diciendo que ahora sí está incluida en el plan de mejoras a 10 años.
The reason of my presence here is because the school is overcrowded, but I just got information that now there is.
But I just got information that now there is a letter that our school is already included in the master facilities plan. So I just got that information from my colleague here, a copy of the master plan.
La sobrepoblación es el primer problema. La sobrepoblación y es un edificio más de 85 años de edad y con unos modulares que expiraron de su fecha de uso, que son un gran problema. Tenemos tres edificios donde es un caos llevar a nuestros hijos a tres diferentes partes donde tenemos solamente 15 minutos para llegar de un lado a otro. ¿Y qué va a suceder cuando la nieve empiece a caer?
We have an overpopulation, also a building that is 85 years old, modules that expired a long time ago. This is a big problem. We have three buildings where we need at least 15 minutes to go from one to the other carrying our children. And my question is, what's going to happen when the snow comes, with the winter?
Ms. Hernandez?
I have two children in different buildings, and I have to walk a distance of two miles between buildings.
Ahora, ¿qué pasará ahora que tenemos el plan? ¿Cuáles son los pasos a seguir? ¿Cuál es el plan? Yes, is my question, yes.
Yes, please conclude. Thank you.
¿Cuáles son los pasos a seguir? ¿Cuál es el plan a largo plazo para solucionar el problema de sobrepoblación en nuestra escuela? A diferencia de Paster y PEC, nosotros queremos un edificio solo donde solo Edwards tenga la administración. Lo que nuestros estudiantes necesitan es no una adición, sino un edificio nuevo donde puedan impartir una educación digna y de buena calidad. Gracias.
Thank you.
So now that we have a plan, what is next is our question. We need long-term plans. We need to be different from Paster and PEC. We need a single building to have all the administration in the same building. So we need, is not, we don't need an annex. What we need is a new building from where to instill the education where our needs need in the community.
Thank you.
I just want to reiterate what Chairman Vitale said about Canty. I've actually, I've been to campus, I've been to your main campus a couple of times. I've actually been to the New Life Center. I've been to the third campus as well. And you are in a severely overcrowded situation, and we appreciate that. So we are working with management, and hopefully we can come up with solutions, as Chairman Vitale talked about with Canty.
Is there anything on the table yet? I heard there is something on the table for Lincoln Park, which is awesome, because these are our kids as well. But is there something on the table for us?
We don't have anything at the moment, but we'll keep working with you and, you know, we'll try to come up with solutions as quick as we can. So, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our next speakers then will be Speaker number eight, please, Erica Anderson, followed by Speaker number 12, Michelle McGrudo, followed by Speaker 15, Matthew Lunsken, and then Speaker number 17, Ralph Fackler, please.